Okay, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. It is 6:09 PM. I apologize for the delay. One of our members is out of town and I was trying to get her on the phone, but it's not working. So, we're going to go ahead and go forward. Before we get started tonight, I just want to go over some ground rules since we have a large crowd and I don't know that everybody has been here before. First, as you can see, I'm wearing a mask, but masks are not required. So, you're not required to wear a mask like me. But you're also welcome too. As the CDC recommends, that people who aren't vaccinated or people who are but have immune issues ought to be vaccinated. Ground rules. So, we do allow public comments. We have two public comment periods in each of our meetings. One is towards the beginning of the meeting and that's only for things that are on our agenda. The second public comment period is towards the end of the meeting where people can talk about whatever they want. We allow 15 minutes for each public comment period. So if there are a lot of people signed up, we do ask that people keep their comments brief. And if somebody has said something, you know, previously that you agree with, you can say, "I agree with the previous speaker," or "I disagree." You don't have to repeat everything so that everybody can get a chance. As far as other ground rules for people participating in our meetings, we ask that the audience stay quiet during the meeting so that the audio recording and the audio going out to the public at home can be heard by everybody. We also ask that per fire code, people not stand in the aisles nor do you block any of the exits. The Fire Marshal is very clear with me that that does pose a code violation. So if we could please have people not standing in the aisles or blocking the exits, I would appreciate it. During our meeting, sometimes people have emotional responses. I would ask you to keep those quietly inside. And then if you need a minute, please go out of the room because this is a business meeting and we have a number of things to get done for the district. So we want to make sure that we have time to do that. So, thank you all for being here tonight and let's get started. So, Ms. Bishop, could you start with the roll call, please?
Ms. Bishop is here. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Odin?
Here.
Ms. Brown is on the telephone.
Can you hear us, Ms. Brown? I thought I had her. Hello? Yes.
Not speaker.
Can you hear us? I can't get you...
Speaker not working?
Wait a minute. How about now?
Oh, I hear you loud and clear.
Okay, great.
All right, welcome, Ms. Brown.
Ms. Brown is here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Guarino?
Here.
Ms. Zeeem is not here tonight. And Ms. Timmons?
Here.
And we also have our new Assistant Superintendent of Elementary, Dr. Sarfey?
Sarfey.
Sarfey? I'll practice that. We have Mr. Parker, Dr. McKinney, and Mr. Donovan.
Great, so, oh, I don't have my thing on. Great, so we do have a quorum. Ms. Bishop, if you could please lead us in the prayer. And Ms. Odin, if you could lead us in the pledge, please.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Thank you. If you could all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you all for that very enthusiastic rendition of the prayer. So this evening, I am happy to announce that we have a recognition today for one of our community partners. So I'm going to actually stand up and walk over to the other podium just because it's more convenient for everybody than me being all the way over here. So if you'll bear with me for a second. This is not awkward at all. Okay, great. Thank you all for being here tonight. This evening, we wanted to recognize the United Way of Greater Nashua for all of the work that they have done, especially during the COVID pandemic, but also generally for the families and students in our district. This year has been extraordinarily challenging for many, many people. I think all of us, it's been extraordinarily challenging. But some of our families, the regular year is challenging. And Mr. Appleberg and Ms. Caesar have worked tirelessly with their army of volunteers to make sure that our students have the technology that they needed, that they have, through 68 hours of hunger, that they have nutritious food during the week, especially during our shutdowns. And I am so, so grateful to have them in our community and to be able to thank them in this way. We have two teachers, Jerry Moylan from North High School and Donna Luna from South High School, who also felt very strongly about the work that the United Way has been doing for their English language learner students. And so if they wanted to come up and say something, I don't know where they went. There you are, right there in the front. So if you all want to come up, the podium is yours.
Nothing happens without glasses. So, I just wanted to read a letter of thanks that I have written. The United Way has been so valuable for our students and our families. And I just wanted to really recognize all the extraordinary efforts that they have done to help our students. Dear Michael Appleberg and staff of the United Way of Greater Nashua, I write this letter to recognize and to thank you and your team for your work and dedication to the community of Greater Nashua and the Nashua School District's students, parents, and staff. This past year and a half has been an enormous challenge. And without the assistance from the United Way of Greater Nashua, it would not have been as successful as it was under such trying circumstances. The sudden switch to remote learning in March of 2020 left all of the Nashua School District students and staff to reinvent how our lives worked together. A school district is held together by the relationships that it builds, from the teachers and students in the classroom to the district office and administration with parents in the community. When the ability to maintain those relationships was tested to the point of breaking, the United Way of Greater Nashua helped provide the glue that allowed us to keep these critical relationships together. By providing laptops and hotspots to students in need, teachers and students were able to maintain connection with each other to rebuild some sort of normalcy, daily structure, and routine for learning. All of these are very critical. We saw direct results in the high attendance rates of students online at the start of the 2021 school year. We were able to maintain a surprisingly high percentage of student attendance online throughout the year as students had the infrastructure to regularly attend classes from donated laptops and hotspots. Many of my EL students were able to complete assignments throughout the year because they could now do their work on a computer and not on their cell phones. Teachers were able to do what they do best, establish critical relationships to encourage students to engage with their teachers and complete their assignments. The United Way community outreach was critical to help keep families together and their children in school. Many parents who lost their jobs depended on their children to go to work and to bring in income for essential living supplies and expenses. The United Way's food distribution network, school supply, and clothing donation proved indispensable in trying times to help keep fundamental needs met for families. It takes a village to raise a child, but the village needs to help stay together in trying times. We are all thankful for the United Way of Greater Nashua who has provided that glue that helps keep this village together for its children and its community.
My name is Donna Luna and I am an ELL teacher at Nashua High School South. On behalf of the ELL Department of Nashua School District, we would like to express our heartfelt thanks to the United Way for its support of our student population during the COVID-19 pandemic. When we made the rapid transition from in-person learning to remote learning, many of our ELL students were cut off from school, classes, and classmates due to a lack of resources at home. As we all scrambled to accommodate for the interruption in their education, the United Way came through again and again with the necessary resources to enable students to connect with their teachers and the schools in order to continue their education. These resources included laptops, Wi-Fi hotspots, school materials, and food. In addition, they offered a space in the basement of their building for teachers to use as a classroom to meet with students. As teachers, we were able to get a second computer monitor from the United Way which greatly increased the efficiency of our teaching as we were able to have our Zoom students on one screen and our teaching materials on the other. We were also able to partner with the United Way to get digital materials with grant funding. As teachers, the success of our students is our greatest reward and when that success is threatened in any way, it is profoundly frustrating. The challenge of language acquisition is monumental enough without adding distance learning to the equation. Our students were resilient, however, and as teachers, we learned to be creative and to work with available resources to ensure our students' success. The process was made so much easier through the help and support of the United Way. Since our words are indeed inadequate to truly express our thanks, we would like to allow our students to thank you instead. And I quote, "Thank you for the computer that you gave me that helped me to be in classes that were online," and that's from Angel. "Thank you for the hotspot. Thanks to this, I had access to my classes again and I was able to study. Thank you for your efforts and the quality of your services," from Joanna. "I just want to thank you for the hotspot. It helped me a lot when my internet was having problems. I lost a lot of days of school of online classes because of that. But after I got the hotspot, I was able to log into my classes without any more problems," Manuela. "I want to thank the United Way for the computer. If it weren't for that computer, I wouldn't have been able to do my schoolwork and wouldn't have been able to study. Thank you so much, Annalisa." These and all of the students in our district are the future of our community. In giving them guidance and a helping hand during difficult times so that they may continue to pursue their education, we are making an investment in the future. The United Way has gone above and beyond and has proven its commitment to our schools, our students, and our community, both now and in the future. We offer you our sincere thanks for your generosity
So I am humbled to be here, to be allowed to give you this plaque and recognition for all of the commitment and service that you have shown over the past year. This is what true citizenship is all about. It's about building a community and an extended family amongst our next generation. And I am so, so grateful to be here with you.
Well, since this was a surprise, you can imagine I don't have much of a speech prepared. But thank you, I appreciate the letters. That was very, very kind. And thank you to the board and the administration for this. I do want to introduce or thank my colleagues, Sarah, who's in the back. Sarah Caesar is our Director of Community and Volunteer Engagement. She's the one who recruits, manages, and deploys that army of volunteers that you mentioned. So she's probably a little tired right now, I'd imagine. And next to her is our intern, Rachel. Rachel is helping us to oversee our Learn United tutoring program, which is continuing to grow and to bring students on board for tutoring services. So thank you so much. Thank you to my colleagues and have a nice evening.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for bearing with my transitions. I have put the podium back. We will have public comments in about three or four minutes. So that will be the public comment period for the items on the agenda. And public comments will be at that podium. You just have to press the button to make sure the light is green or else we won't be able to hear you. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they would like to add or remove from the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing nobody? Oh, I just wanted to remind Ms. Brown...
Consent agenda, Ms. Ed.
I please ask that we don't shout out from the audience. But in general, the consent agenda is items such as, it's on our agenda, minutes that have been posted to our website, financial reports, things that the board reviews. And if we have any questions or quibbles on it or if we think minutes are wrong, then we can say, "Please remove this from the consent agenda and talk about it." So our minutes are usually posted within five business days of our meetings. I forgot where I was. Oh, Ms. Brown, if you would like to speak, shout out or press a button on your phone so we can know that you're wanting to participate. Okay. So if there is no issues with the consent agenda, I would be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion was by Ms. Odin, seconded by Ms. Johnson. Because Ms. Brown is on the phone, we do need to do a voting by roll call.
On the motion to approve the consent agenda, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. There are no items removed from the consent agenda. Does anyone have any communications outside the consent agenda to discuss this evening? Okay. Seeing none, that brings us to our first question, public comment period. I know it says question comment period, but it is a comment period. Limited to items on the agenda. We allow for 15 minutes for public comment. So, Dr. McKinney is kindly grabbing the list for me. I'll read them out as they come. Okay. Mr. Hoffman, did you have a comment for things on the agenda? Okay. Mr. Hoffman, you know how to use the microphone, yep. Just leave it on when you're done, please.
Gary Hoffman, 38 Perham Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, Unit D. So I wanted to speak about the social studies pilot that's on your consent agenda. First of all, I would like to commend Anthony Parker. He really led this process. I feel he listened to our department. He really took it slow and I thought he did a nice job. So thank you, Mr. Parker. I think we're ready to approve this now. The only thing that I would say is they do, you know, in the middle schools, they do mention competency-based grading as something that, you know, we're planning to do in the next couple of years. I know that that was, you know, a difficult discussion and a difficult process when we moved it to the high schools. I think that that does need to be a wider community discussion because, you know, a lot of stakeholders are there. So I would urge as much to kind of slow down with that, include parents if you can. And because if we're going to move that to middle school, we really, really, really need to make sure we get it right. So, thank you, Mr. Parker. I think you did a great job. Welcome, by the way, our new Assistant Superintendent and I hope to be working with you in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. And just a reminder for those people who are new to us, as Mr. Hoffman did, please state your name and your address clearly for the record. Okay.
How you doing? My name is Frank Negus Staples. I am born and raised here in Nashua, New Hampshire, lifelong New Hampshire resident. I currently reside in Manchester at 332 Merrimack Street. The reason I'm here today is the safety and well-being of our children. New Hampshire RSA 126-U:4 restricts and prohibits school entities and teachers from restricting the breathway of any child.
Mr. Staples?
So, I am advising, I'm speaking.
Mr. Staples?
Thank you. I am having my time.
No, Mr. Staples.
So, I am telling you right now...
Mr. Staples?
Shut the mic off. I have a loud enough voice, I don't need a mic.
Mr. Staples?
If you guys don't protect our children and follow the state law as it is...
Mr. Staples, I will ask the police to remove you.
A big, big, big problem. I'm telling you, find out absolute defiance.
Mr. Staples?
Come on, get out. This is why I came here. Follow the state law. Protect our children.
Mr. Staples? Okay.
I'm going up there and you go.
All right.
Make me go. Yeah, I speak with my feet.
Okay.
We have police officers.
All right. All right, folks, listen. This portion of our comment period is for items on the agenda. Okay? Only items on the agenda. If you have something to say that is not on our agenda, we are happy to let you have your moment at the appropriate time. If people speak out of turn or yell over me, I will ask you to leave. If you do not leave when I ask you to leave, the Nashville Police are right outside and they will be happy to escort you out. So let's not do that. This is again, our meeting for the best interest of the district. We're all here for our kids. I'm happy to let people have their time at the appropriate time. But let's be respectful of each other. Okay? All right. Ms. St. John?
I wanted to speak, but not on anything on the agenda.
Okay. We'll come back to you, Ms. St. John. I'm just going to put an arrow to the second comment period. And, oh, I am having difficulty reading it. Mr. Farinelli, did you have something to speak on, on the agenda?
I'm good for now.
Okay. So I will put you on the second comment period as well. Okay. Can you pass that back down? All right, great. So that ends our first comment period of the evening. And on the heels of that, Dr. McKinney, you're up for superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to extend my thanks to the United Way, our two EL teachers, Jerry Moylan and Donna Luna, who are here and presented thanks to the United Way. The United Way distributed over 100,000 breakfasts and lunches to our students, 700-plus laptops to our teachers and students, secured internet connectivity for over 1,000 families, and provided several volunteers and making sure our families had the needed face masks they needed. So thank you to Mike Appleberg and Sarah Caesar from the United Way. Another note, on August 19th, there'll be a vaccination clinic. The public health nurses will be managing a vaccination clinic for all our students' families. It'll be a one-stop clinic for 14 different immunizations for students 12 years older, 12 years or older. And the clinic will take place from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, Thursday, August 19th, right here at Nashua High North. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. McKinney. I didn't realize how very many meals the United Way has distributed this year and it just goes to speak to the level of need in our community, but also the generosity of our community in making sure that our kids don't go hungry because it's hard to learn when you're hungry. So I appreciate that so much. And I appreciate you letting us know about the vaccination clinic. And as you mentioned, it's not just for the COVID shot, it's for all of pediatric immunizations that students might need or their parents want them to have before they return to school. Any response to the superintendent's comments? I'll go around since Ms. Brown's on the phone. Ms. Odin?
I would just like to echo what Dr. McKinney said. I want to thank Mike Appleberg because he does so much for this community. So thank you to Mike and his team for all they do for so many of our students. I want to thank them.
Thank you, Ms. Odin. Ms. Gilio?
We're blessed to have the United Way helping us and that goes a long way to the community as well. But they are outstanding and I thank them.
Thank you. Mr. Guarino?
I would just like to reiterate thank yous to the United Way for everything they do for our community.
Okay. Ms. Brown, did you have a response to the superintendent's comments?
No, thank you. Thank you, Dr. McKinney, and I'll echo everyone else. And thanks to the United Way. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you to the United Way. And I just have a question about the immunizations. Is it mandatory for our students to be immunized before they come into school? Or is that a state, medical, or religious?
There are immunizations that students are required to have. I don't have the list in front of me, but I can get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Bishop?
I also want to thank Mike for all of the hard work that he's done with the United Way, but also with the volunteers. I know several people who handed out bags of food for people and handed out the laptops and helped students with tutoring. Our community is a stronger community with all of our volunteers' help. So thank you and thank you for organizing it up there. I appreciate it.
Okay. And Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I too like to thank Mike for all the work that he and Sarah does at the United Way. I work with them as well. So does Mr. Guarino and the volunteers that's all over Nashua. So thank you. And I am blessed to work with United Way.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Timmons. Okay. The next item on the agenda is student members of the board comments. But our student members are happily on vacation. So we will see them again. I'm not sure if they'll come in August or if they'll wait until September, but I hope that they're enjoying their summer and are someplace where it's not raining all the time. We don't have any updates on the budget because it's all... Has it been all approved by the alderman now?
Yes, it's been approved by the alderman. And we had the $119,000 decrease. So we'll make that entry this month.
Okay. That's unfortunate. Okay. Committee on Finance and Operations, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you very much. I'm going to make a recommendation to approve the contract for the playground equipment at Franklin Street School to BYO Recreation, thank you, at the cost not to exceed $21,008.10 from account 91.1.994-600-81200.
I second that.
Okay. So seconded by Ms. Timmons. Any discussion on the item of playground equipment? Okay. Seeing none, I just want to thank everybody for getting playground equipment for our littlest littles. I'm sure that they will really appreciate that. Ms. Bishop will have to do roll call?
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, my next one is a recommendation to approve the contract for the purchase of the Butterous... Rais boiler from FW Web in the amount of $46,182.25 at Count Franklin Street, deferred maintenance.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? No? All right. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zeeem is not here. Sorry. Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Wonderful.
Recommendation to approve the contract for rigging work at Franklin Street to Cody, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $22,500 contingent upon whether we receive any other bids before 7/26/21 BOE meeting at Count Franklin Street, deferred maintenance. May I?
Seconded by Ms. Oden. And then, go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Donovan, did any other bids come in?
We did receive one other bid. It was higher than this bid.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommendation to approve the con, oh, wait a second, I did that one already. Recommendation to lock in the new electrical contract for three to four years at the lowest possible rate to be determined at the 7/26 Board of Ed meeting.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Oden. Any discussion on this one?
I'll defer to Mr. Donovan.
Okay.
I actually had one question. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Oh, sorry.
Ms. Bishop says, go ahead, Ms. Brown.
I was just going to ask if we had gotten a final quote that was updated.
Yes, I have, I have information. Since these rates fluctuate daily, and when you have the rate, you have 24 hours to lock it in, so assuming it's approved tonight, then I'll make a call and we'll lock it in tonight. But the, we checked with the two largest suppliers, Constellation and Direct Energy. There are other providers, most of which are brokers. Brokers typically add a little fee to their piece. Typically, a lot of the brokers buy direct from Constellation or Direct. The best price that we have and the price that we recommend is a term of 46 months. Well, it's not 48, I don't know, but with the quote of .07037 per kilowatt hour. That's currently higher than the rate which is of .06845. That's the rate that's expiring December 31st. Rates are going up. I do, we've looked at some graphs and information, and it looks like they're going to continue to rise for a while. Don't truly know in the long run, but I think locking in this rate for 46 months is the suggestion of the plan operations and finance department.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
And which company is this?
That would be with Direct Energy.
Direct Energy. That's okay. Thank you.
Do you need the motion to say with Direct Energy?
Yes, probably with Direct Energy for a term of 46 months at a price of .07037.
Ms. Johnson, do you want me to make an amendment, or do you want to just restate your motion?
You can make the amendment.
Okay. So, I move to amend Ms. Johnson's motion to add the words, actually, I, I, I move to amend it to say, the same beginning, recommendation to lock in the new electrical contract for 46 months at a rate of .0737 kilowatts per hour with Direct Energy.
I'll second.
Nope. Mr. Donovan's giving me a look.
You missed the zero between the 07.
Yeah.
So, it's 07037.
Oh, that's better. Now, it looks like an eight on my paper. Okay. So, let me just say it again. The motion is to lock in the new electrical contract for 46 months at a rate of .07037 kilowatts per hour with Direct Energy.
Second.
Okay. Okay. So, any discussion on that? No? Okay. Then, can I have a roll call on the amendment first, and then on the original motion as once it's amended?
Uh huh. Okay. So, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Okay. So, that changes the original motion as we had just discussed. So, we're looking for a roll call vote on the motion. Do you need me to read it again, Ms. Oden?
No.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
And this is for the motion as amended?
As amended.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
It's eight to zero, right? Did I count correctly?
Yep. Eight, zero, one absent.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Recommendation to approve the contract for physical therapy services for the 2021-22 school year to ABC Physical Therapy LLC in the amount not to exceed $213,925 from account Second.
Okay. Do you have any discussion on that motion, Ms. Johnson?
None.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions? Nope? Okay.
Okay. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. You have a lot tonight, Ms. Johnson.
Recommendation?
You guys were very busy.
What?
I said you guys were very busy at the last finance meeting.
We were. We're a good team.
All right.
Recommendation to approve the contract for the 2021-22 school year with the Carol's Center for the Blind in the amount not to exceed $45,000 account IDEA grant. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I don't see any.
Go ahead.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommendation to approve the contract for nursing services to IntraHealthcare for nursing services in the amount not to exceed $35,000 account IDEA grant. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And finally, recommendation to approve the FY21 June transfer report. Second.
Okay. Usually, there's not discussion on that, so go ahead with the roll call.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that concludes everything.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. And I have the next, hold on, I brought my calendar. I have the next finance for the 10th of August. Is that correct?
Uh huh.
Still yes? Okay. Okay. So, policy. Ms. Bishop?
Policy committee met on June 22nd. We have three policies to bring forth to the board. The first one is I move to recommend, I move to approve policy EBBD, indoor air quality without change as reviewed on June 22nd, 2021.
Second.
Okay. Does anyone have any discussion? All right. Seeing none. Oh, man, you're doing double duty. Sorry.
It's fine. No one can read my writing, anyway, whether I'm going fast or slow. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Great.
The second policy, I move to approve policy JLCE, emergency care and first aid without change as reviewed on June 22nd, 2021.
Okay. I'll second that. Any discussion of that policy? No? Okay.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
And the last one that we have, I move to approve policy KF, community use of school facilities as amended and presented.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on policy KF?
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Eight, zero, one, absent. Those are all of the policies that we are presenting. Our next meeting is on 8/17 to follow up with our next full board meeting on the 30th.
Actually, we have another one on the 9th.
Sorry, after.
Okay.
So, we'll committee and then, got it, to the board.
Fantastic.
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
I'd like to ask a question of Ms. Bishop. What happened with JKAA? Are we still in the process of working on that?
Which one was that, again?
That was a child restraint.
Ah, yep. We're going to be discussing that. Are you going to come to our committee meeting?
I'm going to have to, because Ms. Zeeem won't be here, so I'm the alternate, so.
Okay. Yeah, so come. We, we've clarified your question on the training.
Okay.
So, we'll be able to present that in our next committee meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So, that will be an exciting meeting.
It's always exciting.
Okay. Ms. Brown, I know you're on the phone. Are you able to speak or make motions to the Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation?
Absolutely. No problem at all. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Raymond. So, we met on June 22nd, and we do have one recommendation coming out of the community, or out of the committee. I move to approve the middle school social studies pilot proposal for 2021 through 2023 to begin implementation in September of 2021.
I second that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Did you have any discussion or anything you wanted to say to your motion, Ms. Brown?
No. If anyone's got any questions, I'll be happy to answer. As actually Mr. Hoffman said earlier, we commend, Mr. Parker had went around, went out into all the schools and had good discussions with the teachers and the principals and everyone in the social studies department. And I think we have a really good, solid base to move forward and make some really good recommendations through the next couple of years to build the program.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. If I was hearing Mr. Hoffman correctly, he was talking about slowing down competency grading until we can get the parents and more community. So how would that work with this? If we were to slow that down to implement this at the beginning, because, you know, it just doesn't make sense if we have to slow and we're going to push. So can somebody answer the question?
Sure, I'll be happy to. This is, the difference is that competency grading is something that we had an initial meeting, okay, and we will hopefully get there over time. What the Social Studies Pilot is, is a reframing of our curriculum, okay? We're actually writing curriculum, you know, and until we implement competency-based grading, we will continue with the grading model that we have, that we are traditionally using or have traditionally used, all right? So I don't see a conflict there, all right? This is a development of a social studies curriculum. What should we be learning? What are the standards when they come out? How do we align them to the standards? So it's hands-on, nitty-gritty curriculum work that we will be doing.
So when, may I continue with my question?
Go ahead, please, Ms. Johnson.
So when are we going to find out? Okay, so we're going to start this. And then if I look at the plan, the schedule, let me get to that. Phase one, okay, is August to December 21, New Hampshire Learning Initiative, which I was going online, really trying to figure out what exactly they're doing. On phase two, January to June of 2022, vet resources and prepare for pilots. So we have any idea right now what pilot is going to be on reframing the curriculum, development, learning, and the standards at this point in time?
That's a process over time. That is a broad outline. We may adjust as we go along, depending on the pace of the work, you know, and Ellen Hume Howard from NHLI will be helping to facilitate with the teachers, and we will dictate the pace. I mean, that's an outline there. We may adjust it as we go along. And so that's going to be, we have to set out within that timeline when we meet with the teachers and with Ms. Hume Howard, we will develop when we will be getting this work done and how we will be going about it, and who will be the cohorts that will pilot, okay? We'll have a series of pilots over time to vet various materials that teachers could use. And that's what I think is one of the strengths of this proposal, that teachers have a say in what the resources are that they will be using, all right? Sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and how we want to use them, so...
So are we going to have any community or parent input on this coming to us? Or when will we be starting to see the curriculum?
When we feel that we have a product that's ready for primetime.
But it's going to be within that timeframe between January and June of next year? Resources and the pilot's not going to be to August to December? Is that when you're going to roll out a year from now?
Yes, it's a, yes, that is correct. And so when we feel that we need something that has to go before the wider community, we feel is a finished product or a finished enough product, we'll first go to the superintendent, and he will direct what the next steps will be to the board, to the public. And I don't think anyone would have a problem with sharing what we would like to do with the students in social studies, where we would like to take them in the social studies curriculum in the future. And so, you know, with the approval of the superintendent, happy to have community input. This is what your children will be learning. This is what we would like them to study and know and be able to do.
Go ahead, Dr. McKinney.
In the past, when we've done pilots, we've brought recommendations before the board. We give an update through curriculum and evaluation on the status of the pilots, what the pilots were, what materials are being used, and then gather community input, and then present it to the board. So in the past, we've had pilots in literacy and science, and those have worked out over the course of the year. So this would be similar to that. I can share historical documents in terms of how that process has played out. But in the end, it's the board's legal responsibility to approve the primary instructional materials that kids will be using.
I don't mind voting on things, but I'd kind of like to see what, I'm voting on something for a pilot down the road, and I don't really know what's going to be taught to our students. And that's what my, a little bit of my fear is, that I'm going to vote for something that I have no idea what they're going to learn. I understand, I thank Mr. Hoffman for bringing it to our attention about the competency learning and how we have to roll it out and the community input, and I thank him very much. He's been in the system a long time, listened to parents for a long time. So I guess I listen to parents also. I listen to what I feel is right. I just don't know, voting on something that I have no vision on, on what exactly I'm voting on. And I'd rather see a pilot, some idea of what we're going to do, and I have nothing. So I don't know if it's going to be right what I'm voting on or wrong what I'm voting on because I have no groundwork laid out for me. So I guess I'll surprise myself when the vote comes, you know, because I really, I'm really torn on this because I'd like to see what they're going to, some idea of what they're going to be learning as we're rolling this out, so I know if I'm making the right decision. And I'm sure parents, they depend on us to make the right decisions here. And if we don't get it in front of us, how can you make, you know, the right decision, I guess? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Dr. McKinney and Mr. Parker, can I ask, are we, because my understanding was different than Ms. Johnson's, and so now I'm questioning myself. I thought we were voting on the pilot proposal, not the details of the pilot. So I thought we were voting on the framework, and then that that would require you to come back
That is correct.
with details that we had to vote on.
That is correct.
Okay, that makes me feel a little bit better. Go ahead, Dr. McKinney.
I was just going to share two more things. Coming at the next C and E meeting will be the contract that will be with NHLI, which will have more details. If you want an overview of the middle school curriculum, we can give you an idea of what kind of things are covered there, if that's helpful. But in the end, the curriculum hasn't been updated in six years. So we're looking to make changes that are more up to date, particularly coming after COVID. So allowing the teachers to have the same scope and sequence, the same pacing guidance, so whether you're at one middle school or another, all the kids are getting the same experience. So that's just kind of a beginning of all that, but more information will be coming at the C and E meeting in August.
May I respond? Go ahead, Ms. [inaudible].
Well, that makes me happier that everybody in all the middle schools are going to be learning the same thing, because that's one of the things I've been complaining about, that not all the schools have been learning the same things. And I understand it's just a framework, but as I'm reading the framework going down, I, as a person, don't just like the beginning of the book. I like to see the end of the book also because I'm voting for a framework that I don't know what exactly it's going to be. So, but you eased my curiosity up a little bit more, Dr. McKinney. That's going to be coming in the next curriculum meeting. Thank you for explanation.
Mr. Guarino?
Yeah, I think it's kind of a catch-22. You can't, you have to approve that they go and create the curriculum, pilot curriculum, and let them test it out and refine it, and then bring it back for approval. You have to approve that first before we can actually see what we're voting on. So it's kind of a catch-22. If we don't approve it now, then they can't go out and create a pilot. I think we have to have a certain amount of trust, and I trust, I have a vote of confidence for our teachers that have input and our administration that have input, that they know what they're doing. I'm going to give a vote of trust to their professionalism and what they bring to the board. So I think we should do that and vote for this.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms. Odin?
Thank you. First, I have a request. Could we have the door closed? It's awfully noisy out in the hallway at times, and we're hearing a lot of... Oh, thank you. Thank you. I have, I have a question about the pilot. I know at the elementary school, when we got a new reading program, we had three different companies we were looking at when we piloted. Do you have multiple curriculums, companies you're looking at, or is there just one?
We would be looking at multiple, excuse me, multiple resources, okay? So to determine where those resources are coming from, what we would like to do, do our research, come in and test drive them. That's why we have two or three different piloting groups to look at various resources from various places, what makes the most sense for us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parker. Thank you, Dr. McKinney.
Okay. Anyone else? I do have one follow-up question, and that's about the state standards and the SAS. Is social studies being incorporated in the state standards in the SAS?
The state standards, hopefully, we don't know when exactly they're going to come out, but we feel that we have enough in our curriculum that we can work with and then align when the standards do come out. As far as a timeline, your guess is as good as mine right now.
Okay.
So they've been sort of put on hold, and so that we do have connections to the state, so we won't be caught by surprise when the standards do come out. We do have an inkling about where they are going, so...
Thank you. Dr. McKinney?
I just wanted to add, even though it's not included in the state testing, it doesn't omit it from being an important content area and an area that kids can have fun in and make literacy gains and make real-world connections and so many other things. So it's not a high-stakes area, sometimes get overlooked for that, but I would just like to lend importance to that content area as well.
Thank you. My apologies to Mr. Hoffman and all the other social studies teachers out there. This is a valuable part of our education and providing a well-rounded education and preparing our children for citizenship as they move forward. So I'm not knocking social studies in any way. I was just curious. Okay, especially after we aligned our science with the, okay, anyways. Anyone else? No? Okay, then when you're ready, Ms. Bishop, if you could call the role on the motion to approve the Middle School Social Studies Pilot Proposal for 2021 to 2023 to begin implementation in September 2021.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Brown, do you have anything else from curriculum and evaluation this evening?
No, thank you very much. Our next meeting will be mid-August.
Okay, great. All right, so the next item on our agenda is the Superintendent Search Committee. I've been in touch with the search company, BWP, and we are working to schedule a special meeting with the board, I think Tuesday of next week, that would be the third, to talk about implementing timelines moving forward. So that will be, somehow, that will be here in person, but also with our consultants on Zoom. So I don't know how to make that work, but we'll figure it out in the next week, so that'll be fun. Okay, the next item is the Committee on Human...
Chairman President, Ms. Odin has a hand.
I'm so sorry, Ms. Odin. Go ahead.
That's okay. I would recommend, from experience with superintendent searches, that the board look to add teachers, parents, possibly some administrators. It was done in the past, and I think having more people involved in it would be good for the search and good for the community. Having sat the last two weeks, probably six to eight hours with some of our administrators and teachers in interviews, they ask very probing questions. Somebody will give an answer, and there will be two or three probing questions from different individuals. I think it would behoove the board, and I'm not going to be there, so I'm sorry to give this advice, but I've sat on a few of these. And having, having the community and staff members involved is a real plus. So just, just my suggestion.
Thank you, Ms. Odin, and I do think that that is an important topic of discussion next week. So if you have anything else, feel free to email me between now and then, and I will make sure to bring it up. I'm just going to write down that you're out of town. Okay, so Committee on Human Resources. Ms. Timmons, thank you for stepping in today. While Ms. Seem attends to a family emergency, I really appreciate that.
Okay, I move to suspend the rules because the HR committee met today earlier, and they need a roll call vote.
Second. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Ms. Bishop, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
I move to approve Tanya Ackerman, Principal at Birch Hill Elementary School for the 2021-22 school year at an annual salary of $93,250.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? No, I just want to say how pleased I am. That is, was my children's school, now we're in middle school. And I got kicked off of the Facebook group and everything. It's really sad. But I think she'll be fantastic at Birch Hill, and congratulations to her. So, when you're ready?
Was that seconded by Ms. Odin or Ms. Gilio? I apologize.
Ms. Odin.
It was Ms. Odin, okay. I wrote down correctly. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
And congratulations, Ms. Ackerman, you're a new principal at Birch Hill Elementary School.
Yay.
Yay.
Secondly, I'd like to move to approve the personnel recommendations dated July 26, 2021.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. So we had a special meeting scheduled for the ninth for HR, as we do frequently during the summer, to make sure that we get our new hires approved quickly. But in speaking with Dr. McKinney, it looks like we are asking to add, to change that special meeting to a full meeting of the board. So HR matters plus some other matters for the full board. So if everybody could change their calendars from a special meeting to a full meeting, we were all going to be here anyways, so we figured what the heck.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it?
Great. Okay, does anyone have any liaison reports? The Joint Special School Building Committee, I always say it wrong, met last week for an update. We do have a purchase and sale agreement for that last little chunk of property for creating the access road onto the new middle school property. So that's very exciting. We're still waiting on closing, but I don't anticipate any problems. So once that is completed, we can start breaking ground on the new middle school this fall. Let's see, what else? The Fairgrounds project is like 98% done. And our next meeting on the 26th for the joint special will be at Fairgrounds Middle School at 7:00 PM, and the public is welcome to attend that, but there won't be a general tour. I think the meeting will probably be in the gymnasium or somewhere else, Mr. Parker?
They're still working on that, but right now it's in the gymnasium.
Okay, so there'll be signs so that people know where to go. And then sometime in September, September, we'll have an open house where people can come and have tours of the facility. I'm really excited about that. And then work on Penachuk is moving right along. Foundations have been poured in a couple of the additions. Anybody driving by there will notice that there's a lot of fencing up and there's a lot of equipment moving around. You are still able to access the track, but not the tennis or basketball courts. So to access the track, you park on the other side of, what's she use, at Manchester Street, where the church is, and you have to walk across the overpass, and then that joins onto the walking path that goes back to the fields, the baseball and softball fields and the walking track. But please do not try and go in past where the fencing is, because that is a hard-hat area. We don't want anybody getting hurt. And on the other side, not related to us, Penachuk, who owns that property, is working on like a solar farm or something. So they're doing a lot of tree moving, well, tree removal and moving equipment and such for their solar farm, and I have no idea when that will be done. But we will have a brief update on that again in August, but the parents of Penachuk students will get a communication from the principal between now and when school begins about the new traffic pattern, because there is a new light going in in front of the school soon, within the next week or two, I think, to accommodate our new traffic pattern that will make a safer crossing for the middle school students who are walking across the street to get into the school. So that traffic pattern will be, we'll have a month to practice it before school starts, so cross our fingers that everybody remembers it before students are walking. And the bus loop and the parent loop will be completed before school starts next month. So anybody else on that committee think of anything I missed? I didn't bring my notes, so that's, that's all I got.
Unless they change that, the next JS SBC at Fairgrounds starts at seven, but there's, it was scheduled a tour for...
Board members, yep.
You know, at six o'clock.
Yep, so that communication will be going out sometime in the next week or two. But for the general public, 7:00 PM, probably in the gym to accommodate the number of people. And please, if you come to that, don't wear like high heels and fancy shoes because we just put a whole new beautiful floor in, and it will be recently waxed and lovely, and we don't want to damage the brand-new gym floor because it's gorgeous. Okay, and that is on the 26th. Just as a side note, the 26th is also the library back-to-school night that starts at 5:00. So many of us will be running from that event to the joint special, the 26th. And so on that night, the national back-to-school night at the library, they set up in the children's wing. All of our principals come, and they have little stations, and anybody can go and meet their principal, and there's lots of school supplies and other giveaways. And many of our community partners, including the United Way, set up on the lawn outside of the library so that you can see what's out there, what kind of activities are out there. And it's great for both new students and returning students to go say hi to your principals. Okay, that was a lot. I didn't expect that.
That's a great event. I go every year.
Yeah, I meant to mention it in my comments at the end, but since it's the same night, I'm going to just sneak it in there. Okay, any other liaison reports? Okay, nobody. Unfinished business, I have a non-public personnel issue, but I believe, Dr. McKinney, you said that will have to wait, okay? So we will bump that for another agenda. Under new business, I have the Emergency Evacuation Memorandums of Understanding. Everybody should have gotten these confidential memorandums of understanding in your packets. Does anyone require a non-public to ask questions regarding these memorandums?
These self-explanatory, I think they are.
I don't see anybody. Ms. Brown?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, would you like to have a brief non-public?
Yeah, I was just curious about some of these, just a quick couple of answers, and I should be okay if you can indulge me.
Yeah, I can.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons.
Can we do that after we do our non-public? Can we move the non-public up? I mean, the public comment.
Absolutely.
And then do the non-public after the public comment?
We can do...
Or we won't hold them up, and we can...
Yep, we can do that. We do have to come back for a vote on these, on these safety memorandums.
Right, exactly. So, you know, but still, we can move that up because...
Correct. Does anyone have any objections to moving, switching the MOUs and public comments? I would actually suggest that we do it right after board members' comments as well, in case board members want to comment while there's still people here. Anyone? Okay. Everyone is completely silent, so I'm going to take that as no objections. Objections? No objections. Okay. So we will go right to our second public comment period. Just a reminder to everybody, this is for any item, but there's a lot of people here. I don't know how many people have signed up. Please keep your comments brief. Please, if I interrupt you, there's a reason for it, so just take a breath and let me get out what I have to say, and then, you know, we can go from there. I'm not interrupting whether I disagree or agree. That is, it doesn't matter what my personal feelings are and what people are saying. I'm only interrupting for a procedural matter. I'm only interrupting for a procedural matter. Okay. So, first, I have Ms. St. John. Thank you for waiting. Ms. St. John, could you just check on the light when you come down? I'm not sure if we left the microphone on or off.
Okay. That's my job, I'll do it.
Okay. Excellent.
Well, there's a green light.
Okay. Is it bright?
It's very bright.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
I think so.
Barely.
No, try pressing it. Okay, how about now?
The light was on, now it's not.
Gray, you want to check?
I pushed this up.
Jimmy's coming.
Touch the word that says push, please. Oh, thank you. Okay, I can hear us now.
All right, fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to speak. I will be brief, but I just want to make a couple of comments about tonight's meeting, both indoors and outdoors, if I may, just my personal observations.
If you could just state your name and your address for the record before you get started?
Yep. Joanne St. John. I am a resident of Nashua, I'm emphasizing that for a reason, and I live at 25 Bellevue Ave. Thank you. Yeah, so when I pulled up tonight, I was kind of surprised to see a group of people outside, and I'm not sure if they were part of the Proud Boys. I believe they were, but I don't want to misspeak, but, you know, with their flags and symbols and F their shirts, I kind of could tell that, you know, they weren't really a group that I was proud to have out in front of our school board meeting here in Nashua, New Hampshire. So, of course, being...
One second. Excuse me. We don't react to people. It's disrespectful, okay? And I will ask you to leave. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I was curious because I'm very concerned about our school board and my city. I've lived here since 1977. My late husband was a teacher here. He was a legend, quite honestly, and I'm very proud of that fact. My kids went to school here, my grandchildren. Anyway, I'm very concerned about Nashua remaining the city that I love to live in and be proud of. So, I did go up to them, and I asked for a raise of hands of who was from Nashua, and one person raised their hand. Another question I asked was, why, if they're so proud of what they're doing and what they're representing, that they cover themselves up? And the answer I was told, so that I, we, wouldn't go to their homes and threaten them, and they need to protect themselves. Well, all of us need to do that. Anyway, I guess you're proud of being one thing, but at the same time, you want to be hidden. You want to hide your identity. Just an observation. I also want to apologize and actually thank you people for remaining calm during the disruption at the beginning of the meeting, and I thank you all for your great and wonderful service. And I want you to know that there are few minority people who maybe are harsh and rude, but many people in Nashua do respect this board so much and all that you do. So, I want to thank you for that. Briefly, I want to go back to a meeting we had in June. Basically, it was a big debate about wearing masks, and I got up and told my story about I have a certain illness and a certain type of rare asthma, that it was the first year and the last year and a half in five years that I didn't end up in the hospital in basically acute care for many days. Amazingly, within five days, I was very ill. Of course, I've learned my lesson. I immediately went to my pulmonologist. I'm still on medication. I just thought that was a little odd, that here we were in a room full of unmasked, probably unvaccinated people. And I think it's up to the world together to solve this problem. It shouldn't be a political issue. It shouldn't be a right or left issue. It shouldn't be a anything issue. It's simply a public health issue. I think we need to care about our kids. So, I'm very concerned with the vote that we took that night regarding the masks and with the Delta variant becoming more prominent. I would like, I'm hoping that, and I'm so excited for the kids coming back to school and the teachers and the parents, and all the kids are so excited. I'm so happy for them. But we need to keep them safe. It's our job. So, I don't know if that is going to be looked at again, and we're going to reconsider something with the Delta variant coming. Also, just to, I'm not sure if I should mention this or not, but I guess I decided I should after I thought about it. There's a woman here, Alicia Houston, and she wants to run for school board. And, excuse me? Is there a pro...
It's personal now. Cut her off.
I'm not...
I'm sorry, unless she's attacking someone.
She's also been talking for more than two minutes.
This is true. No, I interrupted that guy because he was being disrespectful.
But she doesn't want me to share something, and that's fine.
Go away.
Excuse me!
No personal attacks.
Excuse me, if you're running for school board...
Okay. Hang on.
Point of order, Madam President.
Excuse me! Excuse me! Excuse me! The next person who shouts out will be asked to leave, okay? I understand the concern. I don't think it's invalid, and I think, I'm sorry. I thank Ms. St. John for deciding to edit herself and end her comments on that, on that matter. I will ask that people not use this opportunity to speak towards politics, but again, this is our public comment period where people can speak to what they want, provided it's not hate speech. So, and provided that you're not attacking, you know, a teacher or some other staff member by name. And I try very hard not to interrupt people unless they are being disruptive or they are speaking out of turn. For example, speaking on stuff that's not on the agenda during the agenda comment period. Now, I tend to be a little relaxed with time, as Ms. Houston has pointed out more than one time. I don't like cutting people off. I like to be respectful of every person who comes up, especially when we're going pretty at a pretty quick pace this evening. But I can go buy a timer and put it here on the desk if that's what the district and the board want. So, next up, I have Mr....
Point of order, Madam President.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, I've been on boards before, and we always said, even on the Board of Alderman, we didn't bring the politics into the meetings, and it should stand that way. You don't come in and you don't say that you're running for a different board. You don't, and I think that if, this is about school board issues. If Ms. St. John has an issue with Ms. Houston, then maybe they should talk about it outside, but let's not bring it in here because this is about school matters, what's going on in the schools, and it's not about politics, whether left, right, or in the middle. And we should keep it clean like this. I'm all for First Amendment right. I don't think we should shut anybody down, but we cannot have politics in here around this board, and I don't think it's right because we all have our opinion about people in the audience. We all have our opinion about everybody, and, you know, you just can't do the politics around the board here like this. If she's running, that's outside here. It's not politics around this horseshoe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I think that's an important point to note, and I hope that we can all be respectful of each other and respectful of the fact that we're supposed to be here for the kids right now. So, having said that, Mr., oh, shoot, Farinelli? Did I say that right?
Yes, you did.
All right, great.
All right. Am I on?
No, I don't think you are.
This is...
Yes, that's great. So, your name and address for the record, please.
Robert Farinelli, 92 Ledgestreet. So, it seems like there's a great exaggeration of the danger of this virus to children. Children, if you look up online on statistics from the CDC, deaths and hospitalizations among children are near nonexistent. Schools, just by the way they've been designed, not by what this board has done for a while, already does a great disservice to children. I don't like the fact that we expect children to sit down and listen for hours and hours on end, and I don't think we need to then do any more disservice to them by making them wear masks all day and put them into ecstigma of constant fear over something they shouldn't be afraid about. Now, if you say they're, well, they're going to spread it to other people, I'm, now, I don't know about the vaccination status of all the teachers. I would assume at this point that every teacher who has wanted the vaccine has gotten the vaccine. You know, I'm pretty sure that is the same for all the parents, and if you're a person who trusts the vaccine, then I don't see what the problem's there either. If you're a teacher who trusts the vaccine, then you should be protected against the vaccine if that's your, if that's your belief. So, I don't understand why we think it's necessary to, you know, do more disservice to our children than I think we already do by making them sit all day. I don't think that's how you should educate children, but that's another matter entirely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farinelli. Maria Perez? Did you leave it on, Mr. Farinelli? Yeah, okay, great.
It's on.
Okay. It's not. On the actual microphone where it's attached.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Let's just leave it on if people don't mind. That would be lovely.
Thank you so much. My name is Maria Perez. I was longer resident in Nashua. I'm not longer living Nashua, but I represented a Latino community, and I'm here to, not just to say thank you to the United Way for the amazing work they have done during the pandemic by the Nashua School Board. My kids were students in the Nashua school system many years ago before I decided to move to Milford. I'm just here to say I'm very grateful to all the work everyone in the Nashua community has done to unify our community, to make Nashua welcome, to make everybody part of the community, to make us feel like we're part of something. I just want to say thank you so much, and I want to say my apologies for the way that the meeting started. We are here to work for the students. I'm more than happy to continue volunteering for the Nashua community. I spent a lot of hours volunteering for Nashua, Milford, anywhere in New Hampshire who my presence is needed because I believe we have to think about the people in our communities, not just, I'm a Democrat or Republican, or I like you, I don't like you, I don't live in Nashua anymore. I see Nashua as my second home still, and I still feel like I'm part of Nashua, and I'm proud to be part of Nashua, and I want to, I want to continue to be part of Nashua. So, I'm so grateful that the school board is doing everything they can to work for the students and to make everyone, no matter where we look, no matter how we speak, welcoming into Nashua. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Okay, Alicia Houston?
Can you hear me? Yeah, is it on?
Yes, go ahead.
So, there was really nothing on the agenda that required any comments, and I know that we talked about not bringing politics in. I have children. I have children that live in Nashua. At no point did I ask to be a target of any of this. My children have gotten threats, and I don't think that the people that have reposted something that was based off of conjecture, none of you know me. None of you know what I'm capable of as a mother. None of you know that I rescue dogs. Not a single one of you has cared about anything that has to do with the children over the last month. I've watched many of you repost something that was, again, based on conjecture. I have been vilified by the entire city of Nashua because you made assumptions. You know nothing about me. I'm actually a genuinely kind and compassionate and loving person. Just because I was in a photo does not mean, Ray Guarino, that I am a white supremacist. I am not a white supremacist. I don't condone hate. I don't condone violence. What I do condone is doing what is in the best interest of our children. So, over the last few weeks, while I have been, I'm sorry, is there something super important on your phone?
I'm sorry, Ms. Houston. I'm listening and also taking notes.
Okay.
If you would like me to not do that...
I just wanted to make sure. So, at no point has anyone considered how this impacts my children, how this impacts my family. And while you guys have spent the last month... You okay?
I'm sorry. If we could just let Ms. Houston get her, her speaking, I'm sorry, let Ms. Houston finish her comments without interruption, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Heather. I appreciate it. You guys have spent the last month on Facebook, not all, not all, but some have spent the last month on Facebook being sidetracked by condoning this idea that I'm a white supremacist and I'm not. And I will say it again for the record a million times over. You have put my children in danger. You have put my family in danger, and for that, I will never be able to forgive you. And I am a very forgiving person, but the things that I have seen on Facebook and the things that you guys have done while you should have been focusing on a reopening plan for these children, I commend our administration. I commend all of the people that are going to show up to the classrooms. What I don't commend is that the political bias that's been shown has nothing to do with our children. Keep in mind, when you are a board member or you are an elected official, you are responsible for your actions 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and you are responsible for showing our children what is right and what is wrong. The way that I have been treated shows my children that by posing in any kind of photo or not posing or just being there, that that is enough to vilify another human being and put their families in danger. We've gotten death threats because of this. So, for the record, I want you all to understand that your behaviors follow you into this boardroom. So, please conduct yourselves appropriately and think the next time that you want to post something on Facebook about a parent who is just in a picture at the wrong place at the wrong time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. And Mr. Hoffman?
Gary Hoffman, 38 Program Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. First of all, just want to congratulate Tanya Ackerman. Met her a few times. Heard only great things about her, so I think she's going to do a great job at Birch Hill. I do want to clarify my comments earlier. First of all, I do support the socialized pilot 100%, but I do want to thank Paula Johnson for pointing out the piece on competency-based grading. If you look at the socialized pilot, the only reason I mentioned it is under number three under the socialized pilot says NHLI is also working with the middle schools to introduce competency-based grading, as it did with the elementary school. First of all, they have standards-based grading at the elementary school, just for a little clarification, at least I believe. But secondly, I, why I said you need to slow down on it, that's a pretty big change to make that change. And... And to me, that would be something that the board should vote on. We should have a community discussion. They should do some surveys of parents if we're going to move in that direction before, you know, the teachers start working on it. I mean, we usually approve things in the board level for major changes for almost anything. This is a pretty big change. Now, you know, Maine did get rid of competencies a couple of years ago. You know, there are pros and cons both sides. And I do think that that does need to be a wider discussion first. But the competency-based grading isn't actually part of the Social Size Pilot. That was clear, but it was just mentioned in there. So that's the only reason I mentioned that. I do believe that this board should have a vote on whether to continue to begin with that process with the middle schools. And if they do choose, so that's fine, but then they should also, you know, probably do some parent surveys on top of it. So that's where I was getting at, Ms. Johnson, and thank you for, you know, bringing that up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. All right, so this concludes our second public comment period. Thank you, everybody who came out and had something to say. As we discussed earlier, we'll do board members' comments. And then after that, we will take our brief, non-public, and come back for a quick vote. And then that will conclude our meeting. So Ms. Timmons, would you like to go first or last?
No, I'll go first this time.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for those public comments. They're surprising because these same people that say, "Well, you shouldn't be putting things on Facebook. It's guilty of putting things on Facebook." Use foul language in front of children. I know for a fact where the death threat is. I get them all the time. Proud Boys come to our board meeting. For what? For what? What purpose of them being here? Are they here for our children? I think not. I have 14 grandchildren in this school system that's currently going to school here. They also hear the negative stuff that some of these people post on Facebook. And I don't post anything negative on Facebook. I post only positive things on Facebook. And you cannot show me one single negative thing that I posted on Facebook. No, you can't. Secondly, the right-to-know is ridiculous. It's costing the city a lot of money to constantly ask for right-to-know. You're not going to get a got you from me. It's just not going to happen because I'm not stupid enough to put that stuff on the email. What I say, I say right here publicly so you can hear it. But you, some of these people come in here and swear and yell and use foul language in front of children. But yet they care about their own children, but nobody else's children. So I say is that think what you do and what you say before you start pointing fingers at other people and saying what they're doing and what they're saying. That's what I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Ms. Bishop?
I don't think we had a lot to comment on, on the agenda, which I think was stated earlier. I do find it concerning that we have Proud Boys showing up at our meeting. If you read up on their stances, they're not 100% positive about everything. I would love to see our community unite and work together to make sure that everybody in our system is safe, and that includes our citizens and our students. I think it's very important for us to be able to feel safe wherever we are. And I value and respect people who come to our meetings and share their feelings and are able to do it politely and respectfully. I'm also from Nashua, grew up here, lived here, went to public school here. Many of the people in the audience I recognize as former classmates. Some of them have recently left. But we have a community here that we value and that we've all been a part of, and we are all working very hard to make better. Any kind of hatred towards anybody is just unacceptable, whether it's on social media or if it's done in public and with some thought and feelings behind it. Facebook can be very reactionary, I think. Shouldn't be a platform for everything that you believe and say. You should be able to say it without kind of hiding behind a keyboard. I think it is horrible that we have Proud Boys here. We have a community of minorities that we need to support. They have very important things to say. We need to listen to them. They have a platform here. They can vote however they want. And we're not here to silence anybody. We should hear everybody. That's why we have public comment. But thank you to everybody who's stayed in here, who has maintained their calm and their cool, who does their research and is able to speak eloquently and with positive conviction about their beliefs. So thank you very much to the community for being here. And I am grateful that we are on a board where we are able to have open dialogue and discussions about this. And I actually think that we have made a lot of progress in some of our non-public meetings about where we're going in regards to having open and honest conversations about our beliefs and how, what we bring to the table in regards to our support and our concerns and where they come from. So I think my board members for being here. And I want to thank the community who, even if we disagree, are able to come and engage in positive conversations without making anybody fear for their safety or worry about their children or feel like their rights are going to be taken away or violated. So, yeah, let's keep it like this. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Okay. Please note, comments from the peanut gallery, even when it's hard. Okay, I'm going to go, and then I'm going to go through the thing just so that I don't forget myself because that sometimes happens. So a couple of positive things I just want to point out that are going on this summer. We've had a really successful partnership with the YMCA again for the Summer School Power Scholars Program. And that should be wrapping up in August. And I want to say a big thank you to the YMCA for that again. Summer school graduation for our high school students is tomorrow evening. So I will be there, but I want to give an early congratulations to all of those students who had circumstances in their life that made it so they couldn't finish up by the end of May. And they didn't give up. They persevered, and they came to school in the summer, and they finished it out. And I just, I think special recognition has to be made for the kids who had a bumpy road but persevered. So big congratulations to all of those people tomorrow night. The Soup Kitchen is, every year, they do a back-to-school backpack program. So now is the time, if you want to donate supplies, if you want to go on their website and volunteer your time, or if your family is in need of some assistance with back-to-school supplies, this is the time to go on their website or call them and see what you or they can offer. And finally, I mentioned it earlier, but for anyone who didn't hear, the 26th of August is the Library Back-to-School Night, where you can both meet your principals but also pick up some school supplies there as well. Ms. Bishop mentioned our community. And I think that our ability to come together as a community is one of our biggest strengths. Nashua is the most diverse little city in New Hampshire. We had, last time I counted, it was over 64 different languages spoken in our schools. We have people from all over the world living here. And I'm not a Nashua native. My family moved here 10 years ago. But we chose Nashua for all of these attributes. And I'm raising my kids here on purpose. I think it's great that they have friends who speak different languages at home. I just, I think that that can help give them strength that they might not get someplace else. So a big thank you to everybody in the community and especially the United Way and all of the volunteers there, the volunteers making this back-to-school night happen at the library and again at the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter for all the work that they're doing for all of our kids. And I say "all of our kids" because I like to think of all of the students in the district as our kids, as our collective responsibility. So please check out the websites for all of those things. Ms. Johnson, thank you for waiting.
Not a problem. I'm trying to think about what I want to say tonight. You're not a Nashua native. Either am I. You could tell by my accent. I'm from New York. Been up here over 40 years, never lost it. I don't know, maybe I want to stand down in the crowd. I don't know. You know, we touched on a very important subject here, Facebook. I've been one of these people, from a board member or two, that's gone after me prior to me becoming on the board, the attacks. But you know, when you're elected, you have to be very careful when you attack people on Facebook or anyplace else called libel and defamation of character. And we should all be above that. I don't make it a point to go on to the Nashua scoop or anything. My reader, my daughter might tell me, "Hey, Ma, reader." You know what? There's nothing important on there that I want to comment on. I've also been attacked on a private citizen in the city that called me a domestic terrorist. And I got a threatening letter in the mail. I don't have kids that are in school anymore, but I waited, figured maybe my house would be firebombed because they didn't like my political views. Doesn't matter what your political views are. You know what? This last year between COVID and the election, if we can't accept people for their views, it doesn't matter. You know, how are we going to get to this point to agree? One of my board members, and I really respect her, says, "I can't believe that we're thinking the same way." What's the difference here? You might get to that point fast in a different way than I do to get to compromise. I learned when I was on the boards, the last time on the Board of Alderman, sometimes you have to compromise. You don't have to give up what you believe in, but you can compromise for the good of the city, for the kids here. And this Facebook thing, you know, it is a killer because how many people don't talk to family members anymore because of this political crap on Facebook? And it just goes on and on and on. And I have people call me up and saying, "I've been attacked on Facebook again. I've been attacked on Facebook." And it's sitting members of boards that do it, that are elected. You can't do that. You should be held to a higher standard as an elected official. And I think that's where the problem has lied all these years. We accept people down in Washington, in the State House, and even locally, that aren't held to that standard anymore. We accept lies. We accept people not being respectful. And many times, I'd like to say something to somebody who's bad-mouthed me, attacked me, I just keep my mouth shut on this. Because why? I'm elected. I work for you. If you don't like what I'm saying, you don't like what I'm doing, you know what? It's just too bad. I work for you. And that's why we were elected, to work here for the best interest of the kids. People might not have liked about the masks, but you know what? Kids have to be able to breathe, and I did my homework. I did study. And I looked at all the data from the CDC. The CDC said the kids were less likely to get COVID, and schools were the safest place for them. I'm using the CDC information right on their website. So you can go after me on that. But if the CDC is saying that, and I'm reading it on their website, what do you want me to do? Your argument is with the CDC and not me. I'm reading about the vaccinations. I'm reading about all this. If the teachers are vaccinated, then we shouldn't have any problems. I've come up with a plan already on what to do with the students and the teachers, to separate them. It should be the parents' choice on whether or not these kids wear masks or not. I wouldn't want anybody to tell me about my kids when they were in school. And a matter of fact, and I'll say this again, and I said it before, what they did to one of my kids this district, they would have taken my child away for child abuse. And I could never forgive this district what happened with one of my kids. And I wouldn't want parents to go through what I lived through many years ago. And that's what fought me to run and to advocate for kids more and more. And kids, it's a parent's responsibility. And if you don't advocate for your kids, nobody else will. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. No comments from you this evening. I hope everyone has a safe summer.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Brown. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I really don't want to prolong the agony here and the acrimony. But I have to set the record straight. I wanted to address Ms. Houston, but she apparently had someplace else to go. She didn't want to hear a response from me. She came here and accused me of calling her a white supremacist. I never did that. She came here and accused me of posting something on Facebook. Her friends posted a picture of her in that picture with a Proud Boy flashing a white supremacist sign. I did not post that. I did not call her a white supremacist. So she is running for office. She's running for this board. And I think that's what Ms. St. John wanted to tell us, that be careful for who you vote in on this board. People on this board have to be grounded in reality. This woman is not grounded in reality. I'm not going to vote for her.
Mr. Guarino, I feel like you're crossing a line.
I am. I am being political. You're correct.
It's one thing to say someone accused me of something and it's false. It's something else to go beyond the line and start making accusations.
What I want to say is this, okay? What I asked people to do is be accountable for their actions. And I told Ms. Houston, "You have a lot of explaining to do to the people of Nashua." Don't go blaming me for something that happened to you that you did to yourself. All right, I'm done with that. But I have some other comments I wanted to make. I'm not sure. I wrote a long speech here about CRT and what's been going on in our Boards of Education, all the acrimony that's been going around. And I want to give a vote of confidence to our teachers. Every time someone comes here, some Proud Boy or some person who's on the right wing, right, and they accuse our teachers of indoctrinating our students, what they do is they insult the professionalism of our teachers, and they insult our district. They insult the hard work that we're doing. They insult administration, okay? It's an affront to the professionalism of our teachers. And those people who are going around in this state, they owe our teachers an apology for doing this, okay? Because our teachers work hard. And what they do for our students, what they did personally for me, for my two children that went from kindergarten to 12th grade, we owe them a big round of thanks. Instead of attacking our public school systems, and I think that Governor Sununu, okay, what he has done is a disgrace by passing that bill about divisive concepts. That's a lie. White people are not victims. We are not victims. And I wrote a big thing here, and I wanted to say, when I was a teenager, I don't want to prolong this, I heard the story, I grew up in the 1960s. I heard the story of Emmett Till, okay? And I hope you know the story of Emmett Till, and everyone learns that story. He got his face bashed in by white supremacists. And I was upset. I was a young man. I was a teenager. I was upset. And I didn't know what to think. But I was not victimized because someone told me that story. That's what this divisive concept does. It makes victims of people who aren't victims. The real victims are Emmett Till and other black men, young men who were murdered in this country, and we don't get justice for them. They're the real victims, not white people. Governor Sununu was a disgrace for signing that bill into law. And I just want to say one more thing, and I'm going to shut up. I would like people, I said that before, I know. But I think that people should have empathy. Think about how Emmett Till's mother felt. Think about...
Okay, wait, wait, wait.
I'm not done yet. You had your chance. Quiet.
Stop. Excuse me, please.
Think about, think about how the black community feels.
Guys, guys.
Think about how...
Excuse me, excuse me, please. Excuse me. Wait. Wait, excuse me, please. It doesn't matter. Listen, listen. Agree or disagree with what each of us are saying or during public comments. We try not to interrupt on the subject. But I am going to ask you to wrap it up.
I will wrap it up. I'm asking people what I asked them before. I have sent emails back to people that have sent us emails. I read every email. I ask people to have empathy. Have empathy for people who are different than you. Think about how the black community is feeling. When some people say that they're being attacked, think about how, what they're going through.
Super upset about this.
I'm, all right.
You guys talk about everything but the kids.
I'm done. That's it. Thank you, Madam President.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
How affected are you by everything that you guys are doing? How it affects my family? Not about Proud Boys.
Ma'am. Okay, listen, ma'am. I appreciate your thoughts and your emotions, but we have public comment for that. Okay, listen. I don't need comments from the peanut gallery, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say these things, get these things off my chest. And people have to be accountable for what they do and what their actions are. And I have always been accountable here for the things that I say. And I don't go around attacking people. And I don't go, I just don't do that. That's a lie. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms. Gilio?
Hi. I'm going to take a deep breath, okay? And what I'm going to say, I had written notes to myself earlier because normally, this process starts here, and I would be the second person speaking. So, this has nothing to do with anything that anyone has said so far, okay? I too am going to the graduation tomorrow night for the summer school children, and I am very proud of them. It is the fourth graduation I've had the pleasure of attending in the last several weeks. And I just want to say, as we sat through these graduations and saw all of those students come through and get their diplomas and saw their families cheering them on, that I had to thank this board for the precautions and the safety issues that we followed all last year that allowed those students and those families to be alive to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. And Ms. Oden?
Okay, thank you. Paula is a friend of mine. But I would like to say, as a former teacher here in Nashua, that students do have teachers and administrators advocating for them. Sometimes maybe something gets overlooked. But please, I've seen it. I've done it. We have extremely dedicated staff here in Nashua. So, you need to have confidence in those people because they are working for our kids. The second thing, I wasn't sure whether I should bring this up in unfinished business. We got multiple emails today, this week, from our students. We had a committee on the GPA and class rank. And at the pandemic, it just kind of disbanded. I want to thank the students who wrote, who were present students, past students. I want to thank the parents. I want to thank the teachers for writing to us. This is an important issue for our students and some of our families. It's obvious. It's creating tremendous stress in families and students. And we cannot put it off any much longer. The academic dishonesty, the fact that students are going into other students' accounts to see where their grades are, we heard about this before. This is nothing new. We need to act on this now. I would be willing to go and sit on any committee during the day or at night with these students. But I think we need to do something about this. I know the high schools have taken surveys. They have surveys from the students. They had surveys from the parents. There's another issue. Last April, when we were looking at grading as a pass/fail, when we received multiple emails, and most of them wanted to continue with grades because it was GPA, class rank, and what college I get into. We never heard anything about learning, understanding. It was all about GPAs and class rank. And one of our students that wrote to us spoke about that in the email. As a matter of fact, I printed out all the emails. They were so good. But one thing jumped out at me. We had three or four students saying, "Now that I'm a junior, I care about my grades. It's not until junior year, I understand, that the grades accounted into the GPA. And maybe we need to revisit that." That happened the previous four years I was on the board. But if students don't understand that there are building blocks in those first two years, we're not helping our students. So, I just would like us to do something now for these students because we talk about social, emotional learning. We all read those emails. There are kids that are suffering because of this. Some of them, it's the pressure they put on themselves. Some of the pressure is from their peers, and some of the pressure is from the families. The only thing I would say to those students, I'm not a computer person. They were talking about Facebook. I do no social media. I am careful with passwords. Our students get passwords in kindergarten. Some of those students are still using those passwords at the high school. That's wrong. It isn't difficult to change your password. And it's relatively easy to make a secure password. You can change it to something like dog, elephant, car, orange, sed, and put an exclamation point or one of those things on the top level of the keyboard. Just nonsense words. I just, I just am concerned about what's going on at the high schools. And I think it's more than time to act on it because Dr. McKinney, I'm sure you saw the emails along with us. And our students, we had the committee. They've worked hard. They've done a tremendous amount of research. I would appreciate it if we would act as soon as possible for the good of our students. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Oden.
Can I ask a question regarding that?
Can I just say something? I might answer you. So, I don't usually respond to comments because it's your time to comment on whatever you want. Having said that, Mr. Parker and Dr. McKinney and I spoke on this already. Mr. Richard, as well, was involved in an email chain. I personally responded to every single person who emailed before 1:00 PM today. And then, it's been a crazy afternoon, and I didn't respond to anyone who emailed me after 1:00, but I will. That committee was doing task force, I think we called it, was doing really important work and research. And it hasn't been lost. And Mr. Richard is willing to work to get that going again. But a change of that magnitude needs to go to curriculum before it comes to the full board. So, Mr. Richard is aware. I've told everybody who emailed me to talk to Mr. Richard, if they want to be a part of it, picking it up. And I'm sure he's thrilled about that. And.
Hello?
Then we'll go from there. Yes, Ms. Brown?
Madam President, thank you. Just so you know, I did send a message to Dr. McKinney to consider putting it on our agenda for our next curriculum agenda. So, I'd love to have you present for that discussion, Ms. Oden. Thank you, and I apologize for the interruption.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Did that answer your question, or no? Okay, I'm sorry then.
The question is to Dr. McKinney, the password. Is it that easy for another student to find out what another student's GPA is? It seemed like it, I read those emails too, and I was like, wow.
I'm happy to further discuss passwords in non-public later.
Okay.
In regards to the class, GPA class rank, my understanding, there was a building-level conversation with Mr. Richard that happened last week. And then, the number of emails came after that discussion with the principal. I would ask that the next step for that school would be to include Mr. Parker, and then, for me to have a conversation with them. I have lunch this week with the BOE student reps. I like to talk to them as well. And I'd like to bring back the class rank task force and kind of revisit the work that was done there. We'd probably have some new members on there and then move that whole work forward. But happy to talk about it again at CNE as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm sure many of our students do.
Yep. So, I think people don't realize how much individual meetings that happen behind the scenes between administrators and other administrators and board members and committee chairs and obviously not violating the right-to-know law, but on an individual basis, committee chairs meeting with our admin to create these agendas.
I appreciate that. But I think our students who took the time to write to us need to know that something is going on.
I responded to each one personally.
I didn't because of right-to-know.
Yep. So, I mean, I didn't respond to everyone on the board. But each student or teacher or parent who emailed me got an email response with an action plan. So, Dr. McKinney?
Mrs. Oden, I shared that to that group as well. So, they're on the same understanding as we are.
So, and that was, I had, I got emails on both sides. So, they all got a response with an action plan. Okay. So, thus concludes our board member comments. At this time, I am looking for a motion to go into non-public. It's under RSA 91A32I, which is not listed on our sheet here. But if memory serves, is regarding safety issues.
So moved.
Okay. And.
Can we take a short, short break?
Yes, I would like to do that as well. And just for Jimmy's knowledge, we will ask a couple questions. And then, we will come back. And we do need to take a vote on these safety proposals before we leave for the evening. So, Ms. Timmons made the motion. Did anyone second it?
No.
I'll second it.
Ms. Gilio did.
Oh, Ms. Gilio. Okay. Don't leave yet, Dottie. I need your vote. Okay. Quickly. Hold it. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
She's gone. Ms. Timmons said yes on her way out.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And Ms. Timmons said yes on her way out. Okay. So, motion passes. Seven to zero. So, we are in non-public. Actually, we're on a break as of eight? Is it really? Only 8:11?
Hard to believe.
35 PM. We are back in public. And I am looking for a motion to approve the emergency evacuation.
Motion to seal the minutes first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking for a motion to seal the minutes.
I do it.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you.
It's just because it's written here.
Yep.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Now, I am looking for a motion to approve the emergency evacuation memorandums of understanding that we just discussed.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So, that was Ms. Johnson. I'm sorry, Ms. Gilio?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, we need a roll call on that, whenever you're ready.
Oh, shoot. Hold on. Johnson, Gilio. Okay. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your work on that. All right. We don't have anything else on the agenda. So, I suggest that we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Mrs. Oden and seconded by every single person on the board. So.
Jimmy laughed.
Roll call?
On the motion to adjourn, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zeeem?
Ms. Zeeem is not here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
We are, the motion passes. Heather can do her thing. Okay. We're adjourned at 8:37. That's a weird angle. 8:37 PM.